Now called to order the February 7th, 2019, meeting of the City of Nashua Planning Board. Mr. Secretary, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Donches. Mike Peterson.
Present.
Scott Leclair. Adam Varley.
Here.
Edward Weber.
Here.
Alderman David Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Mary Ann Mazzilli-Goya. Steve DuCrane.
Present.
David Robbins.
Present.
Jerry Pucci. Maggie Harper.
Present.
And we have a quorum and every member will be participating in voting this evening. Next on the agenda, we have the January 10th, 2019, meeting minutes for approval. Oh, sorry, we have two sets of minutes. So let's take first the January 10th, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Has anyone had a chance to review those? And if so, anybody want to make a motion?
I do have a correction.
Okay.
Bottom of the page, statement made by me. There it says, "Original equipment maintenance, OEM." I think staff would know that's not, that's meant to be operation and maintenance.
What is this supposed to be?
Operation and maintenance management, O and M.
Okay. Any other comments, changes to the minutes? Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes with that correction given by Asir Nukun.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Weber to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Abstained.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Robbins abstaining. And then we also have the minutes from the January 10th, 2019, annual meeting of the Planning Board. Does anyone have any comments or questions on those minutes? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Weber to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Mr. Robbins abstaining again, and that motion is approved. Communications, good evening, Roger.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of Planning Board. If you go to your packet, there's two items that you received. One is communication from Donald Ware from Penachuck on case number two tonight at 90 northeast, northwest Boulevard. There is a reminder, and I think Mr. Weber is aware of this for under other business, but there is the annual 2019 National Regional Planning Commission Annual Forum on Transportation with the guest being Victoria Sheehan of State DOT Commissioner. So that's up. So if anyone wants to go to that, you need to register for that. I'm not sure whether we'll have enough. I think we have five people going, so we may need to cancel that meeting. And lastly, I just wanted to draw to your attention, if anyone's thinking about going to the Office of Strategic Initiatives Conference, or OSI for short, that's Saturday, June 1st. Just save the date and register for that. The city will pay for registration, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Reporter Committee and Liaison.
Yes. At the historical district commission, we had one application, 46 Concord Street, and it was approved.
Thank you. Okay, before we get started with the meeting, I will read the procedure. After the legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision plan is read by the Chair, the Board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the Board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin at that point, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to prevent an overview and description of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations. The Board will then have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. Following that, the Chair will ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan may speak. When you have that opportunity, you'll come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they shall respond to any concerns raised by prior public testimony. One public member will then be allowed to respond to only those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end, and the Board will resume the public meeting, at which time the Board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. We'd ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and do not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented, considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinance. Thank you for your interest and courteous attention, and I ask you please silence your cellphones at this time. Old business conditional special use permits, none. Old business subdivision plans, none. Old business site plans, none. New business conditional special use permits, case number one. Fabreze Corp., owner U-Haul Company of Eastern Massachusetts applicant, application and acceptance of proposed amendment to NR 1314 for conditional use permit to allow for truck leasing rental. Property is located at 476 Amherst Street, Sheet H, Lot 116, Zoned Park Industrial, and this is located in Ward Two. As to case number one, I have a motion that this application is complete and ready for the Board to accept jurisdiction.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Weber. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Earl Blatchford. I'm with Hayner Swanson, here representing the applicant, U-Haul Company of Eastern Massachusetts. Also here tonight is Scott Chase, who's President of U-Haul Company of Eastern Massachusetts. We, as you mentioned, the conditional use permit that we've come in for is specifically for MAP H Lot 16, which is the front parcel, which is owned by Fabreze. It's recently been vacated, but they've been on that location for a long period of time. There's a second parcel that's involved with the overall site design, which is a rear lot directly behind, it's Lot 23, but it's not really under, it's not part of the conditional use permit, and I'll explain why. But the combined lot area is about 7.2 acres. As part of the, once the property is acquired, the two lots will be merged as part of the, as a condition of the site plan development. But that's kind of for a later date. So the, let me go to the next plan. So here's the existing condition on the site. It's currently occupied by a one-story building. It's about nineteen and a half thousand square feet, light manufacturing, has a single drive off Amherst Street, parking over in this area, and loading over in this area. And then the rear of the site is all wooded. So about two acres of the seven, seven and a quarter acres are currently developed. As was stated, the property has recently been rezoned from airport industrial to its current park industrial. There is a little sliver in this corner of the site, which is highway business, but doesn't come into play, the proposed uses that, there's two uses that are proposed with this redevelopment. They're both allied in the highway business, so it's the park industrial zone that is under consideration tonight. U-Haul has, currently has a purchase and sales agreement to purchase the prop, both lots, and there's a pretty aggressive due diligence period for this. The owner would like to close on the property this month. So, given that aggressive timeframe, we went to meet with staff in December to discuss the proposal and potential issues. And coming out of that meeting, it made sense for us to proceed with the conditional use permit aspect of this, separate from the site plan, because it would answer one more question and check out one more box in their due diligence before they close on the property. In the meantime, Hayner Swanson is doing field surveys, which we've completed, and we're in the process of doing the, all the site engineering to prepare a full site plan submittal shortly. So if there's any questions why we're doing this in two steps, that's the reason why. It's because of the aggressive due diligence period, and wanting to answer any questions we could, as soon as we could.
And that's just, it wasn't feasible to do the site plan presumably within that timeframe?
No, not at all. No, we were just getting started when we had that meeting, and there was a submittal deadline coming up in about a week, which we were able to make for the conditional use, because we had some readily available exhibits, but not a fully engineered plan. So yeah, that would have been impossible. So that's why we've done this. Lynda McGee indicated that it has been done in the past, so she said she didn't see a problem with proceeding with that, in that manner. So the proposed development, let me talk about that for, zoom back out here. All right, so this is, sorry. So this is a preliminary development plan that was put together by U-Haul. This is the existing building that's out there, which is going to be renovated without any expansion to the footprint. And that's kind of the crux of the conditional use permit. There are two uses proposed out here. One is truck and van leasing, and, which is kind of the smaller portion of the development as far as the building usage goes. So this building is going to be renovated to, out of the nineteen and a half thousand square feet, about four thousand square feet of it is going to be the showroom, offices, and some storage area and mechanical and what have you. With the remaining, about fifteen and a half thousand square feet would be self-storage, small self-storage units. And then the other part, there is a proposed new two-story building, proposed behind the existing building with associated site improvements, and that building is entirely self-storage. So self-storage is allowed. It is, if I can find my notes, self-storage is listed as mini warehouse. It's item 191 in the use matrix, Table 15-1 in section 195-15. That use is allowed in the PI zone. The other use, which is truck leasing and rental, item number 81, is permitted by conditional use. So it's really the truck leasing portion of this that we're in to talk to you about tonight. As I said, we are working on the full design for the project, and we'll be coming in shortly with that. We've submitted a letter addressing the nine points of the conditional use permit in accordance with Section 190-133F of the Land Use Code. It's addressed to Lynda McGee, and there actually is, just for the record, there is a date. It's listed as February 20th, 2018. It should read December 20th, 2018, the same date as the cover letter for myself to Lynda McGee. So I just noticed that today. If the Chair would like, I can run through the nine points that are listed in the letter, or?
I don't think you need to specifically run through them, although, I mean, obviously we reserve for the Board members any questions they may have, but I think we have them sufficiently for the record.
Okay, that's kind of the crux of the reason we're here tonight. One other exhibit, there is a floor plan that I have, which, of the front building, and it just sort of illustrates the, how the, how that space on the existing building is going to be broken up. So this is the showroom area. There's offices over here, there's some storage back in here, there's a mechanical room over here, and all the rest of this building is going to be part of the self-storage. So, and I think the showroom, as far as staff and whatnot, they sort of handle both the truck leasing and the, and the self-storage rentals. So it's kind of a combined operation. So be happy to answer any questions that the Board or members of the audience has.
Questions? Mr. Robert?
I have a question for staff. Recently, we had a self-storage thing that went through, and I see that it says you have no comments. Did this fulfill all those criteria in the self-storage stuff we had in recent?
Well, this is just for, excuse me, is this just for the conditional use, to allow the use of the?
No, I mean the upcoming one that they're going to have, or is that going to take place with the?
But they're going to come back to us?
Well, they're going to come back with the site plan, and at that time, we're going to go through it and make sure that they meet all the criteria, or they'd have to ask for waivers.
Thank you.
Another question.
Asir Nukun.
No, thank you. So, you said the, both uses, truck leasing and self-storage, are permitted by conditional use?
No, the self-storage is allowed outright. It's, the truck leasing is allowed by conditional use.
Okay. So you're just seeking tonight, conditional use for truck leasing?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Yeah, this is not, I mean, this approach is certainly not conventional. We always see a companion site plan with this, and so it leaves me a little bit confused as to what we're doing, because in the, under staff recommendations, we are asked to approve a plan. And I don't know what plan we are approving. We have the, what you have is the existing site plan on record. We have that here, prepared by another company in 1985, that's the plan on record. And then you have a preliminary site plan that really has little bearing on what we're looking at, I suppose, because that hasn't been evaluated. If we go to all the criteria that you described, the nine criteria, you talked about site plan, you know? For instance, criteria number four, it talks about this project is to update the existing building and site with a new building, facade landscaping and so on, which we are not going to see tonight. And went on to criteria number six, talk about the traffic impact report worksheet, which hasn't been done. And criteria seven, talks about other mitigation effect, mitigation to, effects of increased improvisers and so on, things that are really important in the watershed district, drinking watershed. So I don't know, I mean, staff has to help me here as to really why we are doing this. You stated here, Lynda, in the staff report, that there's a push to close the property, there's a purchase and sales, and that's the reason. And upon approval of this conditional use, are they going to close the deal?
Yes.
And what if there are problems with the site plan in the future, that the plan can't mitigate the impact of traffic and stormwater and so on?
I mean, obviously, we're going to have to come up with a plan that does mitigate those issues, as always. So, I mean, there's a certain, there's a certain amount of risk in closing before the site plan, but there's, you know, it's a business deal, and this is what they have, the two parties have talked about. So we're proceeding on that basis. So this takes some of the risk, but not all of the risk, as far as closing on the property.
Yeah. But truly, as I mentioned, I pointed out those criteria, referring to a site plan that really hasn't been prepared or evaluated, and we want to approve a plan based on agreeing to criteria that we haven't, you know, it puts us in a really bad position to want to do so. I wish this was discussed at the staff level before, but, I mean, it's a risk on you, but it's also a risk on us, you know, putting us in that position that, why are we approving something that hasn't been really, the due diligence hasn't been done? So anyway, that's my comment.
Well, we can certainly discuss that further when we get into the?
And I wanted to point out, you know, looking at the site plan that was prepared in 1985, talking of proposed work, that plan hasn't been implemented. I didn't see any striping out in the lot. It points out that some pavement had to be removed, that pavement hasn't been removed. So it's an approved site plan, but certainly one that hasn't been implemented. So it doesn't represent what's out there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the status, as far as striping and whatnot, I don't know whether the site is just of such an age that whatever striping was done is just worn off. I can't really tell you.
Right, I know, you inherited this.
Yeah, exactly. But, you know, just to address, we did circulate the plans that we had. It did go to technical review, so it was looked at by staff, it was circulated.
Meaning, meaning the preliminary plan?
Yeah, the preliminary plan, and taken, you know.
If I'm sitting in that panel, I couldn't tell much out of that. That's just, that's very pictorial, in my view.
Yeah, it is, I agree.
Much of that.
But it's what we had to work with, given the timeframe. So we're just trying to help our client to answer some questions and have a little more comfort level in going into purchasing this property. And that's why we're here. That's why we've done this approach.
I understand.
And I mean, I'm assuming that your client is aware that if we were to approve this conditional use permit tonight, that it's not obviously a guarantee or any commitment that the Planning Board would approve a site plan once it comes before us? I mean, as you said, there's an acknowledgement that there's some degree of?
Absolutely. I mean, in my mind, you're not approving the design that's illustrated on this plan, you're, we're asking you to approve the use for the truck leasing, and that obviously will come back into something that is acceptable to staff and the Board, and addresses, you know, mitigates impacts and addresses concerns.
Sure.
So does it mean that you can start leasing trucks on the property upon disapproval, after you purchase the property, even though a site plan isn't approved?
No.
It's certainly not the intent, but?
Have to get the site plan approved, and they'd have to come in for permits, and we wouldn't allow that until after they come in and get a site plan approved.
Other questions from the Board to the applicant? It's like, no more at this time? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to this plan? So please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan?
Good evening. My name is David Rasmick. I'm an attorney in Boston. I represent MDL and Fabreze, the owners of the property. I don't have any specific or substantive information to provide to you, more than Brother Counsel has provided to you, but just for sake of verification of his information regarding the transaction, that is the status, and obviously Fabreze and MDL are fully supportive of U-Haul and Amurco in their plans going forward from the time they take title from my clients.
Any other questions for the applicant at this point? Are you prepared to move on to the discussion? This concludes the public hearing on this application. We'll now take our deliberations into the public meeting. The Board, however, does reserve the right to call any party for further clarification. So I mean, I think the application itself is fairly straightforward. I understand your point, Steve, about it being somewhat unorthodox, but I do think that ultimately, you know, the risk is really on the applicant, and we really have complete control over the site plan process, and, you know, with Lynda having confirmed that, you know, they wouldn't be able to exercise their rights really under the conditional use without approval of the site plan. I mean, I personally feel comfortable that we can, you know, move forward on this, understanding that, you know, we're not, we're not ceding any of our authority or, you know, waiving the opportunity to just consider the plan. I mean, when we, even if we had these two, even if we had a site plan with this, we would still be acting, you know, independently on the conditional use permit application, which would be, you know, not a decision on the substance of the site plan, would separately be a decision about, you know, whether we're going to authorize the conditional use.
As I said, we do do that, but we always see them together. We always evaluate them together, and it's hardly likely that you'll approve one another the other, you know, during the same meeting.
Right, yeah, as I said, I mean, I understand that it's somewhat unusual, but it's, I don't think it's unprecedented, and, you know, again, my feelings is, it's sort of like the, you know, sometimes when we waive the, was it the 30 days afterwards where we say, yeah, it's, you know, it's really, we're doing that, but it's, you know, the risk is on the applicant. So to me, as long as, as long as the applicant is taking the risk and they understand that they're taking the risk, you know, I don't see any reason, you know, not to act on this tonight, as I said, even though it's, you know, somewhat unusual. But I have some other thoughts on that. Hold it, M. Tenza? Go ahead.
And, you know, I think in some ways, doing it this way is, gives the Planning Board maybe more leverage if there's something that we don't like when the plan comes before us. So I think the applicant has to realize that they take that risk, not that we're going to hold them to any different standard than any other plan that we assess here, but certainly, you know, they'll have more of an interest in complying with whatever the staff recommendations are, or the Planning Board recommendations going forward.
Mr. Robert?
Yes, just a question for staff. Can we approve this without the, all the nine in there?
Approve the conditional use permit without?
Without all the nine things as, what?
That's a good question.
Well, I mean, the ordinance says that the, you know, the conditional use, you know, permit is supposed to meet these nine criteria.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I?
That's the question.
Yeah.
Answer is no.
I mean, I don't see how we could say, well, no, we're going to disregard, you know, three of the criteria or something.
And whereas the step-by-step process is probably beneficial to everyone, Coleman Tenza's suggesting, the process is obviously flawed if we would take just one step today without seeing the rest of it. Certainly, those criteria that we don't think apply today, we are using those criteria without any evidence that they are working. So, in the future, we can revise the process to not include those.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, ask staff to correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, there's nothing in the ordinance that requires that a site plan be submitted with a conditional use permit, right?
No, we've had conditional use permits that have come in not that long ago that we've used older ones. that we've used older ones, like, I believe, the emergency shelter on Toll Street where we used an older one, and they still used, they came in without a current site plan, and we've used older ones.
So, I'm interested in the statement. The first statement of approval that says the plan board should make a determination that a plan meets or doesn't, so what plan are we, we talking about?
Well, we do have a preliminary plan that they're proposing. I mean, the reason they're doing this is, is just time, and they didn't have enough time.
I understand the circumstances, it's just that, well, we take these things seriously, so every word means something to us, and we have attorneys across the aisle here. I think they'll probably take it more seriously than I do, so. You can just leave it up to, to guess, you know?
If I could reiterate what was said, but it's a truck leasing, conditional, it's for the truck leasing, that's gonna be, you're gonna have trucks parked on the site, and they're gonna lease those trucks. They're gonna use, they said they're gonna use existing building for their office, you know, for, and self-storage in the future, and they'll probably build additional self-storage or they'll have areas for additional U-Haul truck rentals or other things that they rent as, as a U-Haul business. They wanted to be sure that they could do the truck leasing before they bought the property, and that's basically what this conditional use allows them to do. They'll have to come in with their site plan for the rest of it, which the majority of the site, I think, is gonna be used for other than just truck leasing, but...
All right, okay, so I'm glad you brought it up, Roger, because I suspect with truck leasing, you have a fleet parked on site.
They would, yes.
Right, and you'd have to make sure that the site works, right? Circulation, parking, that kind of stuff.
Exactly.
Right. This site is also in the watershed district, which are subject to very stringent stormwater rules, especially fleet. If you look at the list of, list of conditions under, in the watershed district, it talks about, you know, storage of vehicles. You have to have provisions for those. You gotta meet the, the remove, the total solid removal criteria, the 80 percent. So, there'll be changes to the plan, important changes, that, that we don't know if those changes can be done.
Right, but that's, but we retain the authority to review and approve or not approve the site plan.
Yeah.
And I just, I think to your point about, sort of, well, let's look at the, the specific language, if you look at items one, three, four, five, seven, and nine, they all refer to the building structure or use. So, the way I look at this is, they're really asking us to approve the use tonight, that we don't, as you say, have, you know, a specific plan in front of us that we're, you know, judging against, but instead, we're, we're looking at these criteria in connection with the use, as has been described to us. And so, what we're saying to them this evening is, you know, either yes or no, we're going to permit you to exercise this use on the site, but, but no, we're not approving any particular, you know, manifestation of it, which you're gonna bring before us at another time, and then we have the authority to approve or not approve that specific plan.
And I'm gonna be a stickler for the wording, and I wouldn't find if the, the responses, the each of the questions, the nine of criteria, would have been responses that did not refer to a site plan that doesn't exist.
I guess what I would say is, I mean, yes, they could, you know, for example, on number four, the building structure or use will not substantially devalue abutting property. They could have simply answered that by saying, at this time, we do not have a site plan, there's no specific building that we can describe, therefore, we have no reason to think, because the, you know, for the time being, the, the, you know, structures are gonna remain as, as is, we have no reason to think at the values of abutting property. But, they've attempted to give us additional information to, you know, inform us about what they intend to do. So, it seems to me that that's a reasonable effort, in the absence of a, of a formal plan, to give us, you know, more information about what they intend to do, and based on the knowledge we have in front, because, again, what we're being asked to do is approve this with the knowledge that we have. And, so, you know, with that knowledge, you know, that they've, that they've given us, and, you know, the, the information they've given us about what they intend to do with the site plan, I think it's reasonable for us to say, okay, well, you know, yes, it's helpful to consider that information, even if we don't have the form, you know, the, the plan in front of us.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Steve raised a question, and maybe I can address that question. The watershed protection, that would be something that we work with, that district. The site flows down towards the railroad tracks from Amherst Street, and then eventually it flows, I think, down behind the old, the builder's square site, and then winds its way. So, there's plenty of treatment opportunities before it goes down the hill in terms of intercepting anything that, or that you feel that might impact the watershed, so, from an engineering point of view, I think they could accomplish that. If it flowed directly into the brook system, I would have more serious concerns.
That's fine, I understand, and I think what you're attempting to do there, Roger, is make an exception to, to a process, you know?
They still have to go through the process, and the board, if it is unhappy with it, they can deny it. It is a park industrial district as well.
I'd rather, if, when you're put it together, not put the board in, in this predicament.
I mean, again, just from my perspective, I mean, I, I don't think, because, again, we're not taking the risk here, the applicant is. And, you know, if, if the ordinance said the board shall only consider a conditional use permit in connection with the site plan, then I'd say, well, no, then we're not, you know, I don't know if I feel comfortable, you know, making an exception, but given that there's no affirmative obligation, and, you know, given that the applicant has provided us the information they have and has acknowledged, you know, the risk that they're bearing, again, I, I don't, I don't think we're, you know, we're doing anything extraordinary here, if we were to, you know, if we're acting on this plan, or, I'm sorry, on this application. Anyone else have further comments? Questions they wanna raise?
Make a motion?
Mr. Weber?
New business number one, conditional use. 476 Amherst Street. Site plan NRO 190-133F, that it does meet with no stipulations.
Motion by Mr. Weber is to approve new business number one, conditional use permit, finding that it does meet the required requirements outlined in site plan NRO section 190-133F with no stipulations. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Tenzin. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
So, that's, that's, motion passes six to one. Okay. New business number two, oh, sorry, let's see, moving on to site plans. New business subdivision plans none, new business site plans, case number two, Land M. Management Company LLC owner, YMCA of Greater Nashua applicant. Application acceptance of proposed amendment to site plan NR 2178, show an aquatic center, including a clubhouse building, outdoor pool, and splash pad, along with accompanying parking and site improvements. Property is located at 90 Northwestern, Northwest Boulevard, Sheet H, Lot 648, Zone Park Industrial, and this is located in Ward 1. As to case number two, type of motion, this application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harvard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record. My name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street, here in Nashua, here tonight representing the YMCA of Greater Nashua. Also with me here tonight is attorney Brad Westgate, and also a few folks from the YMCA, including Michael Chance, their CEO, and Sean Nolan, their properties director. We're here tonight seeking site plan approval for a, a proposed aquatic center to be located at 90 Northwest Boulevard. Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'd just like to give a brief overview of the project, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions...
Please.
...from the board or the public. So, the plan on the right before you, and the plan up on the screen, is aerial display plan of Westwood Park, subject site, 90 Northwest Boulevard, Map H, Lot 648. It's an 8.7 acre site, located in northwest Nashua. It's located towards the center of the display plan, Zone Park Industrial. The site's abutted by the railroad to the north and other industrial and commercial uses located within the park, including Delta Education, Auto Jean, which is formerly 2 CPAC, and also Bellevance Beverages. There's also the Northwest Conservation Area, located across Northwest Boulevard to the south. Our site is frontage along Northwest Boulevard, and access to the site is provided via an existing shared access drive with the Auto Jean property. Just to give you a little bit of background about the site and how it came to be, in the early 2000s, the subject site was part of a, a large project for Corning Lasertron that included a 55 acre parcel that was fully designed and permitted for a 550,000 square foot manufacturing facility and nearly 1,200 parking spaces. Specifically, Lot 648, the area that, that is under discussion tonight, was a 300 space parking lot. The project was only partially constructed, but they did install all the utilities and stormwater infrastructure as part of that project, and the excess land was then subdivided from the original lot to create our subject site, the Auto Jean property, and also the Bellevance Beverage parcel. In 2003, I was before this board as part of a project to construct a roughly 55,000 square foot industrial office building on the subject parcel, along with 51 parking spaces and associated site improvements. The following year, in 2014, the approved site plan was amended to convert the industrial portion of the building into an indoor sports facility, which is known as the Nashville Sports Academy. So, inside this facility, there's four basketball courts, a large turf field, batting cages, along with bathrooms and locker rooms. The plan on the left is, is the proposed master site plan. So, the YMCA is seeking to purchase the existing indoor sports facility, and then to construct a new outdoor aquatic center. Both the indoor and outdoor facilities would be available for use by members of the YMCA of Greater Nashua, along with the Y's facilities, existing facilities, both in Nashua and Merrimack. The facility would fill a current coverage gap in the northwest part of Nashua and surrounding towns. To give you a little bit of information about the aquatic center, it's a pad area that's a little less than 24,000 square feet, about 150 by 150. It's located just south of the existing sports facility. It will include an indoor, I'm sorry, an outdoor pool, splash pad, water slides, and a playground, to be used for instructional, instructional and recreational swimming. Within this pad area is a roughly 3,000 square foot clubhouse, which will house some bathrooms and locker rooms, as well as the pool mechanicals. The hours of operation for the aquatic center will be Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to dusk, and that'll be seasonally, so roughly Memorial Day to Labor Day, as the weather allows here in New England. Associated site improvements include an additional 143 parking spaces, access drives, curbing, sidewalk, fencing, new landscaping, new site lighting, and utility services for the aquatic center building. If successful tonight, the YMCA intends to occupy the existing facility by April 1st or sooner, with the, the goal of construction starting on the aquatic center this fall of 2019, and opening for the summer season 2020. Two key elements of the site plan that I'd just like to touch upon, parking and stormwater. So, parking, we're providing a total of 194 parking spaces on site, including the 51 that exist on site now, which is well above the minimum required of 121 spaces. I do wanna note, there's an additional 53 overflow parking spaces available to this site on the adjacent Auto Jean property, if needed during peak demand. So, the Nashville Sports Facility, when they were in operation, had a formal lease with Auto Jean, and the Y has been in discussions with them to continue. If you've ever been out to the site, especially during off-peak hours, there's a lot of parking out there, so the parking for the Auto Jean facility that we're speaking of, the 51 spaces, is just to the northwest of their existing building, and there is a sidewalk connection that connects the two, the two properties. Parking demand compares well with the existing facilities, both in Merrimack and Nashua. So, Merrimack, Merrimack facility has about 228 parking spots, that kinda lines up with what the YMCA is thinking in terms of demand for this facility here, and the Nashua facility is a little bit bigger, 528 parking spaces, so they have a pretty good idea of, of the parking demand that's needed here. If additional parking is needed in the future, there is room on site to expand parking towards Northwest Boulevard. I'll speak in a, a second about an existing stormwater basin that's out there. It would be possible to fill a portion of that basin with parking, and of course, supplement or, or offset that loss in the basin by some sort of, some sort of subsurface stormwater system there, so there is some room to grow parking on site in the future. Of course, this would require full local and state approvals if, if that proposal would, would move forward. As I mentioned, the second piece I wanted to touch upon is stormwater. The site is located within the city's Water Supply Protection District. So, stormwater runoff generated by this project will be directed into the existing stormwater basin located on site. The existing stormwater basin, as I mentioned, was constructed as part of the Corning project back in the early 2000s. It was designed for a large watershed, a large development. As I mentioned, this particular site was, was earmarked for a 300 space parking lot, and we provided analysis showing that the existing basin is operating well below capacity and can accommodate additional runoff generated from this project. We did follow a similar approach back in 2013 with the original project and building that's on site now. Engineering department staff and also Penn and Chuck Water Works did review the stormwater study, and we're comfortable with our approach. The project is also currently under review with the New Hampshire DES Alteration of Terrain Bureau as part of that permit process. Again, a similar process was followed in 2013 for the original project, and that AOT permit was approved at that time. Mr. Chair, we did request one waiver as part of this application. I'd just like to summarize the, the waiver letter that was submitted. We're seeking a waiver from the Non-Residential Building Design Standards, Section 19172, related to the proposed clubhouse. So, given the accelerated project schedule and the anticipated timing of construction of the aquatic center, which is not to take place until at least the fall, if not the spring of 2020... spring of 2020, the design of the clubhouse building has not yet been completed, so no elevations were available. We did provide as part of that waiver letter some sample elevations and a photo from a current YMCA facility in Westboro, Mass., which was provided to give the board an idea of the design intent. Pitched roof, exterior materials for the CMU block. So again, the similar design intent for this project will be followed as from that facility there. And the YMCA is okay with providing elevations for staff review upon completion, and that is included as a recommended condition in the staff report. So in summary, Mr. Chair, we believe the site plan application before you is complete and conforms with the site plan regulations. The conditions outlined in the staff report are acceptable, and we seek your approval here tonight.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? I wonder if you could just quickly, while folks are thinking about questions that may want to ask, just touch on the traffic report. I'm just looking at it now, but I know you didn't get a chance to.
Sure, I'll give you the rundown. So the traffic memo dated December 27th, 2018, was prepared by the project's traffic engineer, Stephen Purnon and company. The analysis shows that the traffic generated by the proposed project will be minimal, specifically 42 trips in the AMP and 56 trips in the PM peak. Again, this will be seasonally, it won't operate year-round, and these are both below the thresholds requiring further analysis or full-blown traffic study, as laid out in the TIR worksheet.
And in terms of the, not the aquatic center, but the main building, I know, as you said, I've spent plenty of time there, you know, the basketball courts and the indoor soccer field. Is it anticipated that that use is essentially going to stay the same?
Correct.
One thing, in terms of the parking, is the parking net increasing from what it is now, or staying the same, or, you know, from what the site, the current site has in terms of parking spaces?
The current site has 51 spaces on-site and then at least 53 off-site. So we're adding an additional 123 parking spaces.
Thank you.
Around, in and around the aquatic center and then along the rear portion of the building.
Mr. Weber?
Who maintain your, the infiltration area? Will that be maintained by a company, or?
The YMCA will be in charge of maintaining that. I'm not sure if they hire a private contracting firm to.
The only reason I ask it is because a lot of times we have the infiltration and then it just gets messed up. So that needs to be maintained so it doesn't go into, I know you guys would not want to have something that didn't look great.
Correct, yeah. The existing basin is fairly overgrown at this point. You know, it was brought up in a pre-application meeting with the engineering department to highlight the fact that the basin needs to be maintained. And we are required as part of both the site plan process and the DES AOT permit to provide and follow through on an inspection and maintenance manual for all stormwater areas, including annual reporting to both the city and the DES.
Thank you.
Quick question, I was just scanning the plans and the stormwater report to see if um, if the certification for section, the ordinance 190, Chapter 190, Section 215G, and that was implemented last year, middle of last year, it requires a certification by the engineer that they meet the 20% reduction in stormwater or the immediate open space requirements, and I don't know if that, during the application process it was done, but I couldn't find it.
I didn't provide a specific certification. I do say I meet the city's stormwater standards. That applies to redevelop sites.
Yes, and I think this is considered a redevelopment site. Wouldn't you say so?
I wouldn't say.
So we do meet the, we do meet the open space, be happy to provide a certification to that.
Okay, so you don't think it's been done already?
I have not submitted a specific certification referencing that section, but because we meet the open space in the stormwater study, we do say we meet the city's stormwater regulations.
Looks like no more right now.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned in this Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Staff having to add?
Staff has nothing to add.
We all said, or do we have any other questions for the applicant? So this concludes the public hearing on this application. We will now take your deliberations into the public meeting. Board does reserve the right to recall any party for further clarification. One question I have is, Steve, did you want to make, as a condition, a requirement that they provide, that he provide that certification, or?
I don't know, staff's been handling that. It's rather new, it's six-plus months old now, but it's done in the application process, or?
It's interesting, because I just got a review letter today from engineering that was questioning that. So I think up until this point, we were thinking that it was going through the engineering process, being reviewed and looked at, but I, you know, I don't know 100%.
Yeah, well, engineering doesn't deal with open space, I, you know.
Well, the open spaces, you've got, I know that there was just a mention about the 20, the 20% in a letter that we just received today from Mr. Mandola.
Right. It started like this, you, I mean, it looks, you know, it's kind of obvious that it does have enough open space. It's, I mean, the fully impervious side, that's when you start looking for that 20% reduction, but, so, as the ordinance requires, it should be done during the application, so.
Correct, we'll take a look at it during the technical review process.
I think I leave it up to staff to deal with it, yeah.
So if staff doesn't think we need a stipulation to that, is that?
Yeah.
Talking about staff, stipulation number three, because they didn't provide the elevations, I think it was just sample elevations were provided. Stipulation number three talks about staff reviewing building elevations of the clubhouse. I think I want to add, not just review, review and approve.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And just consider Steve's.
Yes.
Comment on stipulation number three there?
I wrote that down. New business number two site plan, Land M Management Company LLC, YMCA, Greater Nashua, 90, at 90 Northwest Boulevard. If the plan does meet NRO 190, 146D, with the waiver request, number one, 190, 172, is granted, will not be contrary in the spirit of the intent of the regulation. Number two is written, number three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the staff will review and approve the building elevations of the clubhouse. Number four through six as written.
Motion by Mr. Weber to approve new business number two site plan, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO, Section 190-146D. With a total of six stipulations, the first being a waiver request reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two as written, number three with the amendment as indicated by Mr. Weber, and then four through six as written in the staff report. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Peterson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business site plans, case number three. Residents at Riverfront Landing Limited Partnership Owner, application and acceptance of proposed amendment to site plan NR 1975 to convert the use of the previously approved restaurant to seven residential units fenced in dog park and add a 10-space parking lot located by the dog park. Property is located at 3 to 11 Bancroft Street, Sheet 40, Lot 50, Zone General Industrial Mixed Use, and this is located in Ward 7. With respect to new business number three, I have a motion that this application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
Like to make the motion?
Motion by Alderman Tenza, is there a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Or mean the open space requirement, and he meant this one.
It says or.
I know.
You do.
But that's what he's referring to.
My name's Jack McTagg, I represent TF Moran, which represents Riverside, Riverside, residents at Riverside Landing. We're here to present the amended site plan. Up on the board, if you look to the far left, that was a full build-out of the site plan. The one on the top right is building C. And if you look down to the bottom right on that first board, that was the Phase 1, Phase 2 plan, and the darkened area on that top right is the Phase 2 plan that isn't being built. At the top right is the proposed amended plan. A little history, it was planned to build out, building C, but we had trouble getting the Army Corps approval because of the sewer overflow that's in that area. In order to fill in that sewer overflow, the city would have to upgrade the sewer pump stations, and that has not been done, so that section, that building can't be built. Everything in Phase 1 has already been constructed, including the building on the top there, which is labeled, was originally built as a restaurant. It's part of the proposal, was to swatch, is to turn this restaurant into a 50, a 50-seat restaurant and 3,600 square feet retail space into seven residential apartments. They will consist of two studio apartments, or one-bedroom apartments, and one two-bedroom All the site utilities that would be needed for these apartments have already been put in. There won't have to be any changes as opposed to the restaurant retail. The parking requirements for the residential building is actually less than the parking requirements for the restaurant retail. About, you need 14 less spaces if you, for the residential as you would for the, what had been the previous proposed restaurant retail. In addition to the retail, which is the apartments, the seven apartments, which is the brown building at the top, would be a dog park, which is the green area to the right, and a, some associated parking with it, is the gray area on the right. The proposed dog park is located approximately where the Phase 2 building, apartment building would have been. It'll have less impact than the proposed apartment building would have had. It will create additional parking that could be used by guests, there'll be 19 spaces that are there. The dog park is actually for the residents of the apartments, so the parking space in itself is not required, but it will provide additional parking in that area for guests, Only had to be a little minor tweaks to the Phase 1 infiltration basin in order for, to handle the additional impervious area that will be going into it, that parking areas is made to drain into infiltration basin that was built in Phase 1. The only utilities that are being proposed in this phase, we call it Phase 1A because it's not quite Phase 2 and not quite Phase 1, but is the addition of a light that'll light up that parking area for, in the, right below the dog park. The traffic from, when compared to the traffic study from Phase 1 to this amended site plan, there's about a 25% reduction in the peak traffic flow. City departments have looked at this, including the Business Industrial Development Authority who's approved it, and the fire department engineers have reviewed this and have not had any objections to it. We have read through the staff report, the only item we would take exception would be item four of the conditions of approval, only because folks from Missouri agreed to complete all the items. Only because folk from Missouri agreed to complete all the items in the city's punch list. The reason they're not doing it right now is due to the season, this work has been scheduled for the spring. And this item is also, and all items have been covered by a performance bond that's already been approved by the DPW and the city attorneys. In conclusion, we find that the traffic will be less to the original proposed plans, will put less strain on the existing infrastructure, the water, sewer, electric. It'll fit well with the existing apartments and fit well in the neighborhood. We feel this amendment is a good improvement and will have no detrimental effects. Are there any questions?
I did have a question. Not with respect to the substance of the plan, but you said you were concerned about stipulation number four, and that's because you're unable to do, or complete certain of those punch list items until the spring, but is there any reason why you wouldn't be able to complete those items before you'd be looking for a certificate of occupancy here? Because that's what the nature of the stipulation is.
No, there's no reason that.
Okay. Mr. Robbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I was looking at some of the dates on here, and I think this plan, and I came to the planning board about the same time in two thousand thirteen. May have attended as many meetings as I have. I got a question. My recollection is in some of the discussions that we've had that one of the selling points of this plan was that having shops and a restaurant in the complex would be a way to bring people into the area who might not be living there, and also provide sort of a leavening of interaction between folks living there and folks not living there, and a way to provide opportunities for people who might not be living there, come and shop, or come and dine at a restaurant. And of course, this would foreclose that opportunity. Has any thought been given to that, or was that a factor in this?
Well, a couple of things. And I can just speak on a couple of them, is that, one is that there actually has, they have pursued finding a restaurant to come into this area, and they have not been able to find one that will come into this area at this point. So, you know, financially, you know, it's not like they just set it aside, but they had actually pursued that. Other is that this is only part of the Riverfront Landing area, you know, we're in this section to the right, but a section to the left is also going to be developed in this whole plan, not by this developer, but by other developers, and maybe by this developer, but right now, but not this project. So, it's not precluding other restaurants or other items that could help draw people into that area, into this area.
So, so what I, what I hear you saying is, and I want to phrase this very carefully, very good faith effort on the part of the developers to fulfill the points in their presentation in various meetings, and the business climate just doesn't seem to want to make that happen, would that be a correct assessment?
Yes, it is. Good evening, my name is Bob Simons from SMC Management. You're absolutely right, I mean, I think when Renaissance Downtown developed the master plan for this entire area, there was great hopes, and we thought it would be an ideal location for a restaurant. But what the market has told us is that there just isn't the visibility from roadways for either a small store, we've talked to people about five different scenarios for restaurants or food preparing areas. Part of the master plan on the western parcel is a mixed use component as well, and then the Riverside properties in between this parcel and the west parcel is a commercial space that we expect, as we develop the whole thing, they will modify the commercial uses in the middle, and then a little bit to the west, there's room for townhomes and condos and that sort of stuff. So, the whole master plan is still evolving as we speak.
Okay, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
Thank you. Two questions. One out of ignorance, does the bus system come up and go through Bancroft, stop at the?
I do not know if the bus system.
Yeah, I don't believe the buses have come up Bancroft now, but there are bicycles that are part of a ride share program in the city that are, that are out there. But I don't believe the buses go up Bancroft.
It's just because part of the what we're looking at in the city of Nashua is to be able to use more bus lines throughout. And if it doesn't, it would be, I think it kind of behooves you to kind of ask Nashua bus system, why not?
Good point. Just to the southeast of this parcel, there is a, the city master plan has the East Hollis improvement district is working on a plan for redoing that whole intersection, and I know there's a lot of discussion about what that involves in bike lanes and commuter rails and buses in this whole area, so I know there's a lot of that discussion going on for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second question. On the dog park, are you going to remove the trees?
There will be a limited amount of trimming of the trees that are out there now, so currently, probably about three quarters of what is, what will be the dog park is treed, and about a third of, a quarter of it is already cut back. But yeah, we'll be cutting back to the edge of the dog park and the fence line.
Yeah, dog likes trees.
They, they do.
Thank you.
Mr. Dupren?
Thank you. So, are we, is it safe to say that building C is not going to be built?
That's correct. The building C is not being built?
Correct.
Okay. So, you talked about traffic reduction by twenty-five percent.
That's just between phase one, so it's actually a bigger reduction than that if you looked at the full traffic load, sorry.
As Mr. Simons mentioned just now, the city is, has a traffic improvement plan for the intersection, and it's been difficult for them to come up with an option that really improves the traffic. One of the difficulties was to make the proper access and traffic operations for Bancroft Street, your main entrance. So I think that's good news for that plan, and I hope they can move forward with something that they can build in the near future. So, the other question is the parking, the new parking lot, nineteen spaces, what's the purpose of that parking lot?
Well, it does provide, you know, if someone wants to drive to the dog park, they can drive to the dog park, but it just also provides auxiliary parking for the buildings around it.
Because I, I don't think, I mean, residents will just walk to the park. Because you're adding additional pavement there, and not like before, in a way you have used porous pavement to help with the stormwater management. I know you're tweaking the detention basin, but in the end, you're still having overflows going to that.
It's actually considerable, like, the numbers that I presented in the first range report were very conservative, I may believe that, I looked, I closed my eyes to everything that's happened outside of it, and I just looked at it, that area, and I said if it just rained here, this is what, how much water would go into it, and then I showed that I could decrease that amount that's going actually into the basin. But if you really look at the whole picture, the rest of that, all that porous pavement is actually picking up quite a bit more water that always goes into that basin, now that will no longer be going into that basin. It's a, it's a lot bigger reduction, if you look at it, you know, from the true existing, pre-existing, you know, pre-phase one, to what phase one is now with that pond, it's a larger, much larger reduction.
My only thing is this, on behalf of the city, we remain concerned that you still have overflows in the event of large
Yeah.
rain events, going into the emergency detention basin, which is there for that purpose, is an emergency sewer overflow. Should have rising rivers and you have sewage, combined sewage rainfall to store, that's where it will go, so you don't want to, you know, take away that capacity, so that concern remains, I mean, ever since this, this project's been going in place, we haven't had an issue with the river rising to flood stages, so we haven't had the opportunity to experience using that overflow basin, that emergency basin, so anyway, that concern is still there.
I can say that the, even the depths from like a hundred year storm are less than the depths would be in pre-existing, existing conditions compared to post. I actually looked at the depths, tried to compare the depths of them, because I figured that would be an important issue, and it's still like, I don't have the number, I'd have to dig through a couple pages, but it's still like four or five feet below even the overflow level, so that still has more capacity there that's not being used at all in that overflow basin.
Well, I have, I want to point something out of, going out there, so you know how you have the median all along the, the main road, Bancroft Street, what will be Bancroft Street. When you get to the very end, and say you're coming back, you need to have a sign similar to what you have in the other noses that tells people which, which lane to take.
Right, you mean like a keep right sign?
Keep right or the splitter sign, because I saw someone parked in the wrong direction on the easterly lane, so I think that additional sign is needed, as you start getting, you know,
More traffic.
More traffic in there. Thank you.
I just have one question.
Mr. Weber?
Sorry. On the basin that you're redoing here, is that supposed to hold the water there and it doesn't drain, or the soil itself rather, is it supposed to be porous so it really drains out?
It's supposed to infiltrate in the ground, larger storms will overflow into, so there'll be some overflow into that emergency overflow basin. Going to get my alliteration, my tongue twisted up with all the letters, but there'll be some minor flow into that overflow basin, but most of the water that comes in there, even to like a, I, I don't have the exact number, but like a fifty year storm, will, it'll hold a fifty year storm and it'll soak it into the ground. Because of drawdown time, I'm having to, you know, let some of that water back into the overflow basin, but not a lot of it.
While I was out there, this area was really wet, wet. Didn't, didn't have any more water, like, it didn't have water coming in until it was just standing water, not a lot of standing water, but you could tell that it wasn't draining, so.
That small grass basin was?
What?
You're talking about the small grass basin?
Uh huh, yes.
Probably frozen.
Yeah, it's probably frozen.
Okay, well, it was a nice day. But it's still, okay.
No, frost, frost in the ground, frost, okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? Looks like we're good for now. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wish to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Is there anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of the plan?
Good evening, board, my name's Craig Ratai, I'm a resident of Riverfront Landing. I can tell you right now, there are no buses that go through there, the city buses don't come through. It will be nice to have a dog park there, there's a lot of people that have dogs, I do not, but we have a lot of friends that have dogs there. The additional parking in that area would be nice, there is parking in front of that existing building, but along the roadway behind the apartment buildings, there's no parking over there, so that would be very nice. And it's just a shame that this building's not being used, it's a beautiful building and.
We, we were told when we moved in, it was going to be a restaurant and shopping, that was the intent, which we believe was the intent, but.
Which would have been nice, but.
But this is also.
It's a beautiful building and it's going to waste. That's all we have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Staff, if anything to add?
Staff, if there's nothing to add, thank you.
In that case, I'll go ahead and close the hearing, and we will move into the public meeting for further deliberations, and the board does reserve the right to recall the party for further clarification. So, I think, Steve, you satisfied with the responses in terms of stormwater management?
Sure, thank you.
Any other? I didn't hear any other significant questions or concerns, I mean, obviously we had just the general issue of the conversion of the original intent here of the restaurant and.
I just wanted to close, close that issue out.
Right, agreed, and I appreciate you asking that question, and I mean, I think we heard that they would have, they would have liked to have been able to do that, but it just wasn't in the cards right now, but it sounds like perhaps there would be an opportunity down the road to do that elsewhere on the property, so. It seems like as, as those residents indicated, it would be nice to have them utilize the building, if that means utilizing as additional residences and the addition of the dog park, that seems, that seems like a good, a good plan at this stage in the project, so. Does anyone else have any, anything to add, Mr. Weber?
Yeah, I was out there and looking at the plans. Somebody's going to get a really, really nice upon that, if they have the deck there, they're gonna, I would recommend that they have a gate there, that person put a gate there for privacy, you know, for that two bed bedroom, one that has the full deck, really big deck, I would probably recommend, they probably will, put a gate right there so they have security. If you go out on that, I was able to go out on the deck, and it's like, wow, this is really a nice deck, right there on the water, and yeah, it is a beautiful inside, you can look inside and you can see how really nice it is, and it is sad that it did not get to that. The other thing was, there are people that are actually taking their dogs right there and going over into that area, they were there when I was there. They were using that area for taking their dogs out there. That's why I said the dogs, the dogs like trees, so it's good not to lose them.
So, yeah, I'd be in favor of this, easy. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Montenza?
For new business number three, site plan for residences at Riverfront Landing Limited Partnership. At the planning board, making a determination that this plan meets the requirements as outlined in site plan NRO section one ninety dash one forty-six D. With all the stipulations as listed in the, in the recommendations, stipulations, recommendations as listed.
A motion by Alder Montenza is to approve new business number three, site plan, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO section one ninety dash one forty-six D. With a total of five stipulations, all is written in the staff report. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Second by Mr. Peterson, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I just want to make a comment, I hope the applicants realize what a compliment that was from the master carpenter that Mr. Weber was about the deck on the.
They actually, they actually, under, there's construction underneath the floors, only thing I would have said. Only thing I would have said, but it can't be done now, is below, under the decking material and above on the floor joists, a strip on top of it, a, like, felt paper, the roofing paper, and just staple that down prevents those from rotting.
Yeah, we used to do that with, when we used to build our decks out of spruce.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But even that, even the other, pressure street will, in time, I'll pick...
You should call them next time.
No.
Did you go to Wentworth?
I did.
I remember you.
Oh, are you?
Was this a reunion?
Party time.
I sit on the advisory board at Wentworth now.
Oh, good for you.
Full circle. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
I think you've pulled that.
Should have stopped it in a minute.
Okay. New business site plan, case number four, this case has been postponed to the March 21st, 2019 meeting. Other business case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. See if anyone had a chance to...
I have a question.
Okay.
Might not be. Might not be nothing. The boat ramp, we don't, it doesn't have any impact on any other city, the river part of it. Wouldn't impact.
Staff?
No, it's a recreational facility, a boat ramp. I don't think that would constitute regional impact.
You mean the construction?
No.
If there's a boat ramp, I think somewhere over in the Hudson side too, I think as well, or access there as well. I mean, as you see it up and down the river. This is a ramp that's going to be used for emergency access by the fire department, police department for any kind of river accidents or that as well. So, it's, that's what it's used for today, and so this will improve it. Yeah, as well as a recreational aspect.
Okay.
Make a motion, there is no regional impact.
A motion by Mr. Weber that having reviewed the agenda, there are no proposals of regional impact. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we do have one other business item. It's the referral of the fiscal year 2020 capital improvements program from the Capital Improvements Committee to the planning board. However, Mr. Leclair, obviously, is not here this evening, and he is our representative on the Capital Improvements Committee. Roger, I'm assuming, is your, should we wait, do you think, for, since we don't have anyone to present, are you in a position to present?
Well, it's really not, this is pretty, a lot of the projects are repeat projects from previous years, anyway. I think there might be one or two new. It's, I know of a budget, they're going to, they're introducing the budget earlier this year. And so, they need to have this document as quickly as possible. And I think the board, although it's not on your agenda, I think five of the members have told staff that you won't be attending the next meeting, so it will be difficult for us to make a quorum. So, you'll have to cancel that meeting. So, typically, I would say we would, could approve it at your next meeting in February. But we can't do that because of the potential lack of quorum at your next meeting. If you have any questions, I've sat on the committee, I'm the secretary, I can certainly answer any questions. I think the rating is pretty self-explanatory. If the board members have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. I know the chairman and the committee did a good job this year of listening to the different presenters. Engineer Ducrent was one of them, and I think he got fairly good results this year, if I'm not mistaken.
All right. Good scorecard.
Right. So, I don't see any major impediments, other than the fact that we should try to get it, you know, so it can get introduced into the budget process and before the Board of Alderman as quickly as possible.
Well, that works for me.
I have a question.
Question?
Does the city look at any grant system throughout the federal government that would help out? I know that the city did get it on the airport. Federal government basically paid for that extension, but throughout some of the stuff, is it...
There's several grants. I mean, I know just in community development alone, we have several grants that are part of this, this, you know, 80/20 grants through the TAP program or the DOT in the federal government. I think Steve has a number that may have grants associated them. Was that not correct, Steve?
Yeah, we may have one or two in here.
Yeah, so, it's not just the airport. Airport, by and large, is probably one, it's one of those rare things where 95% is federal, 2.5% is state, and 2.5% is city. So, you're, you get, you know, it's not much of a city share to, if it's a large project, to leverage that, if you will, those dollars.
Sometimes it's good to mention it in the report, that it's...
It is, and it's in the report, if you...
I didn't look.
Yeah, it's, if you...
Scanned through it, but...
Okay.
Well, it is a fact, Mr. Chair, that federal grants have diminished over the years for infrastructure-type capital improvements. But you still have a lot of grants for operational-type, you know, uses, so you don't see those in this program. Police get them, the health department gets those kinds of grants and so on. They don't make it to the capital improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Roger about the, about the plan?
For the board members, information in the back of the book is the six-year programmer plan. It kind of spells out all the requests that the departments and divisions have outlined for the future years coming and the dollar amounts associated with those. Although they aren't, other than that, the fiscal year 2020 column is there. But it gives the board and, the planning board and the Board of Alderman, an idea of what's in the horizon and what expenditures may be needed in the future. I might add also that I know this report that the, yeah, the subcommittee of the planning board, the Capital Improvements Committee, and the planning board have been, has received a number of accolades from the city's bond rating council who feel that this is a very good document that they use in helping to determine the city's bond rating, which is, I think, a feather in your cap as a committee and as a board, that you have a document that does spell out in the process that weighs and prioritizes your capital improvements projects in the city.
I'm going to put, add one thing that come to mind for, because I've been talking to Dave Boucher at the wastewater. They actually have a digester there that actually puts out electricity. It's not, it's not really old, but it actually puts money back into our coffers by, they selling the electricity. They have two new generators that are coming up. And I've been talking to Dave Boucher about something else that I'm going to talk with Steve about later. So, they are saving money or putting money back in.
Is that like a biodigester that makes methane, turns it into electricity?
It does. It turns it, it uses the gas, and they add natural gas to it, and it generates electricity. And they have two new generators that are in, and they're going to, you know, to replace the old.
Sounds similar to the Four Hills landfill where they extract the methane out of the landfill and run the generator with it.
Yeah, this is even better.
Even better.
Even better.
Well, I'm satisfied.
Okay. Make a motion.
Anybody else have any concerns or questions?
Before I make a motion? I'm going to make a motion to give a favorable referral to FY 2020 Capital Improvements Program.
Okay, motion by Mr. Weber to make a favorable recommendation with respect to the fiscal year 2020 capital improvements program. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Tenzel. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then, given what Roger said about the number of members who are planning not to be here next meeting and that possibly wouldn't have a quorum, which staff, is there, is there anything on the agenda for the February 21st meeting? Or are we in a position to cancel without any, without impacting?
I think we're in a good position, as I understand, since we knew about it from your last meeting, that this is a potential occurrence, that we were able to reposition those. We may have had one case with something like that, but the way things worked out, I think it's fine if it goes in March, so... So, if you don't have a quorum anyway, you can't really meet. But you should vote to amend your agenda and cancel the meeting.
Right, so that's what I was going to ask, ask if someone could make a motion to formally cancel the February 21st, 2019 meeting.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the next meeting, February 21st. Not postpone, just remove it.
So, motion by Mr. Weber to cancel the February 21st, 2019 meeting. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
See you with the next cutting of meetings.
See you then.
Just to tell you guys, these have been, I've been going to them all, and they're very educational. You can talk to other people that are on planning staffs if you have any questions. Very educational. I would recommend that attend if you have, if you want to get more information out of people that... And they put a, the National Regional Planning Commission puts a great deal of effort on who they're going to bring in and why. This is for us, for more knowledge, so I highly recommend going, and plus, it's absolutely good food.
Open bar.
Food is always a draw, right?
I don't think it's open bar.
What about, anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Weber to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and we adjourned at 8:43.